All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Bath School Board of Education on Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Some of you, who called?
Mrs. Ernest.
Here.
This is Kelly. Mr. Kennedy, here. Mr. Leidy, here. Mr. White, here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is recognition of students in the staff.
Okay, well, we've got a few organizations here. Maybe we'll start with the biggest group. They look hungry. I don't think they're all getting breakfast. Okay. Do they eat a lot of key meals, Coach?
Yes, Thursday and then Friday, so they eat a lot, yes.
Well, I don't want to keep you too long for that, but I'd like you to stand up and maybe introduce yourselves. Are you all seniors this year?
Yes, sir.
Feel free to stand up and tell us. All of you stand up at once. Don't let anybody feel alone. Glad to have you here, Coach.
I guess that's good to hear, Andrew.
I'm actually there with a little market.
Zachary Wilson, Ben Smith, Dana Williams. James O.
I'm a boss.
Okay, so we are glad to have you here. You're four games in, six games to go, and hopefully working for more, right? Just want to get you onto a sixth game, get as deep into the tournament as you can. Appreciate the, you know, play on the field, you know. It's been very entertaining. Sometimes works over the other.
Yeah, we like to make you sorry.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I still felt that with thirty seconds left, we had a chance last spring. So I think as long as you're thinking there's always a chance, there is always a chance. Good luck with the rest of the season. Thank you for coming. Always call. Coach, the bully up there says we're small and mighty. What's that?
We're small and mighty. Want us to...
Small and mighty.
Stay right here.
You want to introduce yourself?
I'm Abel. I'm a solo senior for Bath local.
Okay, so I've got the young team then. Let's see, I have to refresh my memory here. You have the WPL on Thursday, right? Your regular season's over, the WPL, then the tournament's followed that. Where's the tournament?
Uh, in Walhalla.
Okay, Walhalla. Okay, that's the WPL, right?
Correct. Section was next Thursday at Whisley A.
Okay, that's in Calida.
Calida.
All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, Rob.
And I'm assuming everybody else is a band student.
Yeah.
Except the two.
Right.
Oh, this is either Mr. Kendrick. You want to... Well, we'll let him introduce. Stand up and introduce yourself.
Uh, how long is the trumpet? Senior trombone player?
Okay. All right. Okay. I have one request. Can you lower the temperature for Saturday night?
I wish.
Because I remember last year it was pretty, pretty warm.
Sure is.
Uh, but regardless of the temperature, we'll be out there. Drew John received some very good performances this year. Appreciate it. Thank you. Hard work you put in, all of you, all of our sports and activities. Uh, you represent the district very well. Thank you. Yeah. You're free to go.
Much more said.
Thank you. You all get them. So I'd like to have your out some less.
Okay, next on the agenda is board responses to previous communications. We have none. Uh, next is caring of the public. Items on the agenda, we also have none there. So next up is items from board president, Will Stewart, with the problem liaison, Jeff Close.
Thank you. Okay, even though we are still have some things going on. Uh, this year Apollo decided to participate in the national school lunch program called the Community Eligibility Provisions. What this is, the government has a grant that schools can apply for based on needs. So it determines by how many you have on free and reduced lunches. And in the program, all the students get a free breakfast and a free lunch. Uh, no second, you know, just a basic meal. Well, this year Apollo was real close, just within a couple percentages, but they didn't make the grant. So Apollo administration decided to pay for it themselves out of their general funds. So every student is eligible to get a free lunch and a free breakfast. They decided to do this because in the past they noticed that a lot of the kids, for various reasons, were not eating lunches. Maybe it was that they didn't have the financial means, but for some reason their parents didn't apply for the free or reduced lunch. Uh, kids had their own money and wanted to save it for themselves, you know, gas and their own personal things that they, you know, wouldn't eat lunch. But they noticed that the majority of the kids are eating lunch, not as many for breakfast because a lot of kids get in their time to get to class. But they have noticed that a lot more of the, you know, they don't come early enough, uh, are eating their lunch. So, uh, they said that it has helped a little bit with the morale. I put a couple handouts on your desk. The first one is the day one enrollment. This is the actual printout of the number of students by schools that appeared in the various classes the first day. This was not the official count because kids have two weeks to decide if that's the program they really want, if they want to switch to another program if there's an opening, or if they want to go back to their home school. The numbers in red are what they consider the official numbers. Keith Warner, our present superintendent, uh, was hired in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and since the time he's been on board, our enrollment has increased forty-eight percent. And there's still waiting lists. So for some reason, a student maybe is withdrawn or is removed. Uh, you've got a waiting list for the programs. And the field of cosmetology and welding have the biggest waiting list, and they have had that for the last couple of years that they're looking about possibly, um, offering another section in each of those to accommodate the need. On the second page is some of the activities that the various classes participated in last year. Uh, this is as complete as they could get because some of the classes, the teachers do, uh, work on their own in the class, they don't know. This year they've already started the, uh, the construction, uh, pro, uh, see, the construction, uh, heavy construction is working with the village of Crotusville, removing homes or buildings for them to build, uh, some new places. And a couple of our groups are working together to, uh, to build, um, a mini amphitheater out in this city, safety city area. So that would be coming to do that. Um, the enrollment is increasing and the administration is looking for creative ways to add more classrooms. They've been remodeling and revamping some of the outer buildings to put classes out there. They're trying to do anything they can without having to build another structure. Um, some of the things that you might be interested in, if any of you've been to the Guard Cafe, it opens officially October twenty-first. The four-one-one blast for freshmen in South Forest to come explore in November nineteenth, and the craft show will be the first Saturday in a row. Any questions?
Next is the commissioner reporter from Mr. Ernest.
Okay, I gave you a whole packet of stuff. I promise I'm not going to read all of it. But when I first saw it, Betty Greenbaum retired last spring. She gave me a book called Now I Know by Peter Mufazi. He was a gentleman there. Probably gave it to me two years ago. I only read it last spring, and that was very intriguing to me. It's about a gentleman who was from Yonah, um, went for lots of foster cares, but bottom line is he's now a foster dad himself. The whole storyline is about how the power of one person. So one person in his life changed his whole trajectory. So that's been my message for our staff on opening day. Put on the screen behind you there so you can see, we bought eight by, eight and a half by eleven magnets. So every classroom has those in the classroom now to remind our students and our staff that each and one of us is worthy and special and known and seen and loved. And so that can be our motto throughout the year. I think a lot of good things have happened, so. Just want to share that, and I also want to give a plug to Betty Greenbaum. I'll let her take two or three of them. I'll get to that. So, um, so in front of you there is your packet of information. Um, I'll kind of just go through this quickly, but the safety patrol members this year were inducted last Friday. So we did that in the gym at the end of the day. So you can see our fifth graders. Um, there are, I believe, fourteen total on each grade level. I don't think we're very cooperative there. Okay, you guys had that party. Sure. Then we also did our news cats. Well, did you mess up my phone? Hi? Huh? Huh? Let me just... What the fuck am I doing? It's just saved that one, so. Okay. So, yeah, there's our fourth graders. So we did that as well. Of course, you see Kevin there. That was really awesome. Yeah, I didn't make him speak. He said he'd shake hands and give out badges, which he did. Um, then we had the news cats, uh, selected last week, and on Saturday they came in. Dr. Hilty and I spent five hours with them on Saturday, trying to train them on all the things they need to do. They seemed excited. We played our first birthday edition on Monday. We had our first edition this new Friday. You may have seen, if you're at the tailgate party, some of them were walking around interviewing people. That was out and out training. They just were going around and weighing it. It was awesome. So we're looking forward to them, you know, once again, these are leadership groups. That's our goal. To create and promote leadership in our building. Dr. Hilty's gonna take the safety patrol members and at least quarterly, if not more, regularly meet with them about some leadership qualities and try to do more than just have them do their duties. Try to, you know, instill in them what is, what are some good qualities to do in leadership, how to handle conflict, you know, what do we do when we're trying to correct somebody who's running down the hallway and not being respectful back, you know, proper ways to be a good leader. So hoping that's going to be the case. And then the next slide there was those five students there. That was our first Wildcat Way students. So Will Ripper, Alexi Butterfield, Dane Smith, Kenny Slimeheart, and Arlie Cleveland. Okay. Also added a flyer there for you for Pickup Patrol. Probably Stephanie's the only one that even knows what I'm talking about. Um, so we started, uh, this year to use Pickup Patrol. And Pickup Patrol is an app on, on the parent's device. And so anytime a parent wants to pick their child up, they simply put in who's picking the child up, what time they're going to be there, and it goes right to a spreadsheet for our secretary. So what that's done, it has, it has made the amount of phone calls coming in way limited, but more importantly, I think, it's taken away the error of the parent writes a note, kid gets this student. Student either gives to a teacher, teacher forgets to set it down, or the student forgets to get it out. Now, and we had a mom do this today, she said, oh my gosh, I woke up at nine o'clock and I realized I didn't write it. I needed to let you know. Right there, nine o'clock. We did. So that's been really awesome, um, and that's been very beneficial. Once again, that's a compliment to Dr. Hilty. He used that quarter awesome. He said it was very seamless and helpful, and so far it has been wonderful. So we've been, even parents are now using it to report absences. So if a student's absent, they're going in there and doing. So have you had to use it at all, something?
Not used yet.
Yeah. Well, your kids don't use it, so it's okay. But it has been very helpful. Okay, just some other summary things for you. Uh, just to remind, we started Benchmark Advance and in K one and Sabas, Mind You, which are our reading curriculum. We started it this year. It's, you know, we're hitting there, but it takes a while to learn any new curriculum. So we're hoping that's going to go well. Um, there's bumps and rope. We have training for October twenty-four scheduled with them through Zoom. Of course, Sabas, they kind of answer questions. It's a three-hour Zoom time for our teachers to kind of get some clarity if they have frustrations with things that go on in there. Upcoming math decisions. Our current math curriculum is Go Math. We bought enough books to get us for this year and next year. I don't know if you've seen any of the ODE information. There's been some hints that they're going to possibly go to, uh, curriculum that is approved and kind of like you did with the science of reading. Found out today that it doesn't look like that's going to happen now. I was kind of dragging my feet, like, we don't want to pick a curriculum and then be told to do something else. So that's just to give you an idea, probably budget-wise more than anything, that we're hopefully going to select curriculum for you guys to adopt next fall, and we'll purchase for the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. So it's a little ways out. Okay. Are there any questions about those students? Am I going too fast? Too slow? Um, the report cards case, of course, came out yesterday. Um, and I'm just going to flip on the screen here. So Bath Elementary School, if you haven't yet seen, that's four and a half stars overall. And, um, I think that's really good. That is down from where we've been. We were at five stars the last couple of years. Um, and I'll explain a little bit more what we were planning on doing with our unity shirts. But with it being four and a half stars, I don't think four and a half sounds very good on a shirt, so we're not going to compare. Not for that. But I did put in your packet, kind of a packet of, of a spreadsheet of kind of comparisons so you can get an idea. Um, so I won't read all these to you, but what I did is I highlighted in green the schools that were ahead of us. So for example, if you look at the overall star rating, you have Spencerville with five stars. Now, these are just elementary schools. Franklin Elementary with four and a half and Bath Elementary with four and a half. So in the county, yes, we didn't get the five stars, but right behind Spencerville, which we continue to say, what is Spencerville doing with your academics? Because we're kicking over its butt. They're flat R R. Um, they've been doing that, so, um, so, yeah, but you can kind of see there with the overall rating points, the achievement. Once again, the achievement category, so that's how many students actually pass a test. Um, we had, um, for us, we're tied with Spencerville and Bluffton as having the five stars there. Um, performance index, we actually had the highest performance index, um, many of the schools there, ninety-four point one. So I won't keep reading. See, but there's a lot of good things still happening. Um, I think the goal is always for us to just do our very best. Of course, we would like to be the top. That's, we want to be the top. But, um, to always be reflective and see what is, what is working, what is not. Um, I also put together spreadsheets. You could see, um, different categories. So the performance index is another way of looking at it. Bluffton, Bath, and Spencerville with five stars, performance index. I do apologize if Bluffton was ahead of us, so ninety-four point one, well, ninety-four, ninety-four point four. Um, so, you know, Bluffton, Bath, and Spencerville, right at the top of that category. I also put together at each grade level so you can see how those panned out. So third grade English Language Arts, last year we had eighty-four point five percent of our students passed. Bluffton was ahead of us at ninety-two point eight. Uh, so we're second in the county there. Third grade math, ninety-three point eight, and, uh, the next place one was Bluffton at ninety point four. You can see the state scores next to that. So the state reading score is sixty-one point three and sixty-four point four. Fourth grade, we were fourth in the county. Um, Spencerville had the highest score, ninety-one point two. We had seventy-nine point five. Fourth grade math, we were third in the county at ninety-one point zero. So, uh, ahead of us was Bluffton at ninety-four point three and Spencerville at ninety-one point two. So I'd say ninety-one point zero, ninety-one point three are pretty close to be tied at that part. Um, and then fifth grade, we finished fourth, having the fourth highest scores. In English Language Arts, seventy-five point eight. Spencerville leading the way in all three categories. Math, we're fifth at seventy-six point six, which has been the lowest math score we had, and I can remember. And I, if you know anything about our math teachers, Mr. Ryndell, Mrs. Lottie, that wasn't taken lightly, not because I go for it all. I, I would be highly surprised if that number doesn't jump just because they do a lot of reflection in those, in those. And then, uh, our science scores, ninety point six, continue to be very high in the county, right behind Spencerville. So are there any questions about that at all? And you, I, I put in your packet a whole gray card, the whole thing, but a lot of years I explained all the details. I don't think I really do that, so. But I'd be glad to sit down with any of you who want to look at it more detail. And, um, again, tomorrow, Mr. Estes and I and Mr. Staley and Mr. Jesko are going to sit down and look at all of our great programs and kind of talk about, you know, what we learned, what we, you know, the goals that we set, because I think is the only. The last thing I wanted to share with you is I want to thank the PTS. Uh, Rick was there when I asked for, um, a donation for the unity shirts. And I want to do a little backstory here. So last spring, Mr. Estes received an email from the U.S. Department of Education saying that Bath Local Schools, you know, Bath Elementary School met the criteria for a, uh, National Blue Ribbon Award. National Blue Ribboned schools are schools that achieve at such a high excellence for so long that they're considered models for what we should be looking to try to do. I say that to say this. So we planned on the unity shirts being a blue ribbon with all these puzzle pieces, you know, the community, our teachers, our students, and really playing up, this is awesome. There were fourteen schools in Ohio that were selected. We were one of fourteen. I kept waiting for the email to say, go ahead and tell your community. It didn't come. It didn't come. So I called the lady, U.S. Department of Education, and she said, well, that program has then discontinued. And I wasn't allowed to tell you. We told the states and they're supposed to tell you. So I contacted the lady at the state. The person, Mr. Estes, saw the response, and it's actually in your, that last packet, is their response to me. But I, I asked, could you please at least be transparent with us? Our community deserves to know what we were going to get. Our, our kids, our staff, our families deserve to be recognized for this awesome award. And, um, she, it was a, it was a template of apologetic, saying, it's been canceled. So then I then responded with another one, saying, it'd be very helpful if in the future you could at least recognize us for something like this because the U.S. Department of Education gave it to the states. So their, the top letter in that last packet is their last response, which is really nice. And it's pretty well saying, you are correct. Your school deserves the recognition that you earned, and Ohio plans to do something for those fourteen schools. So at some point, I hope to be able to say to you guys, here's what that award means. I say all that to say, that last packet is the, is the twenty-eight page document that we had to submit because if you're a National Blue Ribboned school, it goes on their website to show other schools, what do you do that gets you where you're at? So I'm not going to read that to you, but I want to read to you this, on the last page of that application. It asks for us to, um, it says, while excellent schools employ multiple strategies, please describe approximately fourteen, four hundred words, one practice that has been the most instrumental. And I, I said that a long time, like, what, what do I believe continues to be the reason why Bath Elementary School students are finding so much success? And Dr. Hilty, who's only been with us one year, I think he said it best and helped me write this. So I'm just going to read them. I'm just going to read to you the first part of it. And here's what we came up with. The cornerstone of Bath Elementary School's success, the singular practice that propels us to excel, to excellence, is our unwavering commitment to cultivating and sustaining a strong sense of collective teacher efficacy. This belief deeply ingrained in every staff member is the driving force behind our exceptional outcomes. CTE, the shared belief among teachers that their collective actions can positively impact student learning and well-being is a powerful predictor of school success. And about that, about the laundry, it is not just a concept, it's a daily practice. This shared belief fosters a culture of collaboration where teachers intuitively work together, leveraging their collective expertise. This translates into frequent, purposeful conversations about curriculum, behavioral practices, and student needs. The staff does not operate on silos. We are a cohesive unit, constantly sharing insights and refining their approaches. This collaborative spirit leads to improved teaching strategies, more effective behavior interventions, an enriching or engaging learning environment. And the last, very last paragraph, in essence, collective teacher efficacy is the bedrock upon which Bath Elementary School's success is built. It's the underlying force that empowers staff to collaborate, effectively innovate continuously, and ultimately create an exceptional learning environment for our students. It's not just one practice among many. It's the practice that makes all other practices more effective, making it the most instrumental factor of Bath Elementary School's achievement. I say that because we can pick curriculum, we can pick, I, I will you believe, the reason we continue to push the envelope is because staff continually have conversations. It even happened with Mrs. Parker today. She was asking great questions about schedules, and I said, I read that one line where she said, that's what we're talking about. Like, how do we help each other do better? So anyway, I'll get off my soapbox. Do you have any questions about that at all? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have the group to just come in off the courts, right, ladies?
Yeah.
Getting a hankover out there? Not really. Not yet. So as you're saying, now you're getting closer to the end of your season, right? WPL next weekend, LCC. Has it been a good season? Have you had a good time?
Yeah.
You do it all. Looks like you've all spent some time with the sun, so maybe more than you want, but, you know, again, part of what you signed up for. But we appreciate you coming this evening. If you'd like to stand up, we'd like for you to introduce yourselves and tell us what grade you're in.
Um, my name is Lily Holbert, and I'm a senior.
My name is Margaret Marvers, and I'm a senior.
I'm Allison Perchiger, and I'm a senior.
I'm Elizabeth Jamie, and I'm a senior.
Okay, I didn't realize we have so many seniors on the team. Well, good luck with the rest of the season. Thank you for coming tonight. I need to go find someplace to.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is student achievement liaison, and since Mrs. Kelly is absent, I will cover that tonight. Um, we just have one. From Mr. Jesko. Uh, he says, senior Zach Welch recently broke a school record for career touchdown passes, which was previously held by Rich Jackin. Zach has broken a career touchdown passes and is still going. And sophomore Penny Francis broke a school record for cross, cross-country with a time of eighteen minutes and forty-two seconds. She broke her own previous record and is likely to do so again soon. So congratulations to Zach and Penny. Okay, next is superintendent's report.
Okay, trainings. With most of our permanent improvement projects, uh, there's safety and security behind us. We're beginning the second phase of the process to ensure the safety and security of our students and staff. That phase will be focused on trainings. Uh, at our last administrative council meeting, which was last Thursday, Dan Grotheaus, who is a school safety liaison with the Ohio School Safety Center, showed us a lengthy list of training activities, most of which are online. I think they're about five pages up here. And we'll have to figure out, you know, which ones might be beneficial, which ones we might be able to work into, uh, some of our professional development and what we can do with that. In addition, at our next administrative council meeting, uh, we have a representative coming from the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. This is the deputy moon shower. And then we've also had contact with the, um, Oakwood Correctional Facility. Uh, they apparently have manpower and programs that could be very helpful for us in emergencies. So we're trying to get a representative from that organization to come lead the results. Uh, transportation, uh, tonight you're being asked to approve the resignation of our transportation director and approve the appointment of Carrie Calvert as interim transportation director. Uh, we'll follow our process of posting the job for five days and then interviewing, uh, qualified applicants after that. We're trying to deal with a critical driver shortage. We are one driver short, and Carrie will have to continue to drive even though she is our minimum driver. Because if we took her out, we'd be driving short. And substitutes are not easy to find. Uh, we might have to get creative there, come back with some kind of plan to help us meet that shortage so that we can afford, if Carrie is a full-time transportation worker. So, if Carrie is a full-time transportation worker or wherever, I'd say.
Okay. All right, next is additions to the agenda action items. We haven't had it. Um, next is adoption of the agenda and action items. Do I have a motion to approve?
Somebody.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. White?
Yes. Mrs. Hersh.
Yes. Next is superintendent's consent.
Okay. Okay. Under A, we have recommendations for employment slash resignation. Uh, we have certified staff with certified change in salary, certified supplemental employment, certified substitutes, certified nurse approved with current substitute teacher rate. Okay. Certified ball field placements and student teachers for this year. Uh, you can see all of them coming from high order. Classified staff, we have classified resignation, uh, classified change in employment, certified employment, or I'm sorry, classified employment, classified supplemental employment, classified substitute employment, substitute clinical aid, substitute facility approved, substitute monitor. Outside employment and volunteer coaches. I will say, I think, with the exception of our need for bus drivers, we're trying to need full staff. Tonight's agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next is treasurer's report.
I don't understand this, I don't believe in road traffic. Uh, two months in, July and August, um, you know, we're going to kind of look through, uh, kind of look at data, uh, July and August here. We've got two months into the school year. Uh, revenue is seven million, expenses three point nine, data three million. Uh, balance is at five, which we'll kind of talk about in comparison, uh, in two months into the school year. Um, again, you can see the, the numbers on the revenue side. We've got real estate three point seven, uh, state aid one point four, total of seven million. On the expense side, salaries two point one, retirement insurance seven hundred sixty-two thousand, and three point nine million. Again, with the tax salary coming in, it looks, the green is kind of heavier with the, you know, with the, with the revenue piece, the real estate a part of it. Uh, again, that'll balance out as we get through the first half of the year here. Uh, salaries and wages, again, fifty-four percent, benefits nineteen, other areas typical, purchase service sixteen percent, uh, for the typical and revenue income. Uh, that history, again, kind of give you the update on that history. Revenue, uh, this Thursday on August thirty-one, going back to twenty-two, we're at seventeen point four, twenty-three eighteen point four, eighteen point eight, eighteen point seven. And again, compare us to what we would have had with the capital improvement fund in the oh-seventy, we're at eighteen, we're over eighteen million. Um, you know, giving, giving that five-year, kind of five-year snapshot. You know, again, you can see in the red here for two months, with the money's moved to capital projects fund, but again, that, that change. You can see the red bars kind of giving you that where we're at in comparison. Uh, investments, uh, again, still doing well with, uh, you know, Star Ohio and SPS Investments. Uh, interest rates are still in a good spot. Uh, continuing to kind of, kind of put away there. Food service, uh, again, two months in, you know, we've got a little money coming in with the local side, twenty-six thousand, expenses one oh eight, so two months into the year, we're a loss of eighty-two thousand, and then the balance is seven hundred twenty-one thousand. Athletic fund, again, it's just, just starting to climb August, I think. Uh, football should be pretty big this year with the red teams at home, which, you know, Friday night, it's a nice crowd, Shawnee. Uh, you can see that activity, you know, what you pick up here with football seems to be going on. Revenue basically three seven hundred, expenses fourteen hundred. Uh, we've got a slight gain, and then the balance forty-six thousand, and then now the general fund, you know, forty-four thousand spent. Um, you know, some of the forecast data, I'm going to talk a little bit about it. Uh, we're changing kind of what the legislature is doing, we've got forecast. You know, we're, we're doing it now this year, it's, it's a little bit earlier. And it's also the current year plus three years, so it's like a four-year forecast. You know, and it seems kind of soaring away from the drop to five-year forecast, but it's basically a four-year forecast, so whatever. We'll, we'll, we'll talk through it. Um, you know, my first slide here, I wanted to know, when I look at like the real estate tax at eight point three million, the, when I go to the personal property tax, one point, one point nine, total of ten point two, and kind of compare that to the state aid part, the state aid part of our, our numbers. Uh, when I look at unrestricted state aid at eight point one, restricted state aid is six hundred sixty-five thousand, and state reimbursement under that home state rollback is coming from the state, nine hundred eighty-five thousand. You know, ninety million, you know, again, when you look at our total revenue, roughly forty-eight point three percent is local, forty-six point four percent is coming from the state. So, that balance, you know, I, I think when you talk about balance and, you know, we don't want one on the other side to go, you know, paywire as far as, you know, either the state coming in saying, you know, we're going to, we're going to strip out the inside millage, you're going to lose a chunk of your, your inside millage. You know, our balance is, I, I think, in a good spot. You know, that state aid piece, you know, so roughly, when you talk about, you know, when you talk about the state aid being frozen, um, there's a variety of ways that could happen. You know, we're, we're looking at, you know, half, almost half our money comes from the state. So, again, we're, we're concerned on, I think, both sides. The state and local, if part of it gets stripped away, you know, it's, it's a concern because half our money is coming really from, it's a, it's a good balance. Uh, again, that trade data on the, on the property tax. You know, we go back to twenty-two, we're starting almost seven million. Uh, bring it up to twenty-five, the current, you know, we're seven point six million, this could be twenty-five. Um, projected at eight point three million for twenty-six. You know, again, I think our position is that we're okay with property tax reform, just, again, do it in a thoughtful manner. Uh, you know, do it in a manner that maybe you're going to cap inflation on some of those property values. You know, I think there's some, there's some ways to do it that doesn't, you know, you know, totally strip out what we're getting from the property tax side of things. Again, we're looking at the state aid, where we've been twenty-two, six point eight million, go to twenty-five, we're seven point nine million. Um, you know, I'm going to carry it flat, when I look at twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I'm kind of keeping that state aid flat. Uh, but I look at twenty-six, you know, roughly eight, almost eight point two million. Uh, again, kind of balance there between state and local. Um, the salary piece, um, you know, looking at the progression of where we've been in twenty-one. I guess there's back one more year, twenty-one, you know, nine point, almost nine point three million. I go to current, up, up to twenty, twenty-five, we're eleven point five million. Um, you know, projected out in time, twenty-nine, thirteen point seven million. Uh, you know, as a school district, employees, and employees are a big, you know, our biggest expense, the salaries and benefits. Uh, but again, you can see that progression. Kind of just a rough projection on where, where things are going. Again, other benefits, uh, healthcare, you know, we're like everybody else, trying to keep the inflation on healthcare at A. Uh, the share people were getting what, it was, it was rest, eight percent on the medical. So, eight percent prior year was, we're nine percent, so nine to eight percent. I think we'll probably need a trend, I think, barely. But that number over time, we're going to grow to the benefits. Uh, and the medical insurance is a big piece of that. You know, going from three point one million to twenty-one, up to current twenty-five, or three point nine million. Again, you take that number out in time, twenty-nine, we're five point, almost five point two million on the benefit side. Uh, and again, accounting, self-insured accounting, a lot of adjustments to the plan over time to try to make it a little more cost-effective. And, you know, that just gets tougher every year. Um, cash balance, and again, a large part of that shift is related to the movement to the capital improvements fund and cash. That transferred last year. Basically, I'm going from fifteen point seven to sixty-five, dropping down to seven point four. Uh, and again, you know, the forecast is structured where revenue, usually we're, we're keeping it somewhat flat, expenses sure are growing. So, yeah, on the forecast, the cash balance does come down. Um, you know, if, every forecast is probably like that to some level, because you do not know the state revenues going out here for three to four. You know, property tax, you know, I think we're still watching this piece of it, and we keep hearing this talk of, you know, let's get rid of every property tax. You know, again, the concern is whether it's schools, police, fire, libraries, health, you know, EMS, roads, there's just a lot of services, senior citizen services. Um, to say that we're just going to take that all away, it's just, it's kind of hard to fathom what that's going to look like if we're dropping, dropping some of the services. You know, another part of it, you know, if, if we move from a property tax to something else, you're going to shift that burden from corporations that are going to pay the property tax. You know, you're going to, you're going to shift it away where they're not, if it is gone, and then, you know, the fourth, the property damage aren't paying that property tax, it could be shifted to an income tax, which is going to hit the locals harder. Uh, you know, property taxes are a stable revenue base. Um, elimination could cause a high in state and local income tax. So, again, I think we're still watching where, where this goes. Um, and I, I think that debate, you know, I think we're still having a lot of discussion on this, on, on this issue. Um, cat packs, a couple of things, as we talked about, you know, what's coming up with the cat group, and, you know, some of the questions that I'm kind of preparing for being down the road. Um, when we look at our current millage of what the residential millage rate looks like, thirty-two point four three mils on our current piece. And when we look at that, six point one five is inside, twelve point eight is on the current expense levy for nineteen seventy-six, point four one is per improvement, one eight two four is per improvement, that emergency substitute, uh, nine point four five six. Bond levy for the elementary, two point seven four, that was voted in at five point three four. Now that collects a two point seven four, the, the bond for the elementary. Again, talking about that total, three, thirty-two point four three one. You know, just a couple of reminders, because I think some of this data is critical on the elementary. The Bath Elementary was passed on March sixth of two thousand twelve. Uh, twenty-five point one million, thirty-seven years, five point three four mils, now collecting at two point seven four. Bell five is roughly four point five million. Uh, the state dollars coming back to us on a future project would be just right at almost six million, which would be twenty-nine percent of the twenty, twenty point five million. Uh, that's split, twenty-one, seventy-one, twenty-nine, twenty-nine percent of the state share. Again, some of that data, like I said, I'm working ahead for the future meetings. You know, the other part, when I look at taxes in the county, it's something like, well, you know, where's the Bath millage at? Well, keep in mind that, you know, three districts have income tax. So, when I, when I look at Lockton, it's twenty-three, twenty-two, nine mils, they also have an income tax. Delphus, they've got millage of twenty point eight two plus income tax. Spencer Hills is twenty-two point nine with income tax. Uh, you know, Shawnee is thirty-two point two one, probably not much in the military-related bond issues for new construction, I think. Uh, when I look at, uh, you know, line, they're twenty-seven point four two mils. Uh, but their spending is twenty thousand, twenty-two, twenty thousand two two six per student per year. You know, because, so that number to me also has to be in the mix when I look at, again, you know, I, I wouldn't say Bath is low spending, high achieving. And like I said, when you look at the millage by itself, you know, keep in mind, we're a little bit like Shawnee from the standpoint that if the valuation's high, you're going to get less state aid, so in turn, you're going to have a higher millage. Sometimes that's a lock to grapple with in your mind on how that works. You know. You know, line is going to get to a point where they, you know, again, their spending's at a different level. Uh, again, they, they've got different things they're handling. But again, their millage is twenty-seven point four two, again, they're going to be, uh, a lot lower. The evaluation per student for, uh, the evaluation per student would be much lower than ours. Again, they're going to have more state aid, so they're going to have more spending, which will last more. Again, data that will be used in, uh, future future reference. Uh, other tax, you know, information to think about, what's, you know, that PI levy that was on in eighty-seven and ninety-seven. Those were both passed, uh, in November twenty-one. When we talk about the permanent improvement levies, those PI levies are going to use for basically construction, renovation items that'll last a longer than five years. Um, you know, again, just mentally thinking ahead as far as what that sequencing will be. Those probably are going to be looked to be renewable when the call twenty-six or the count of year twenty-seven. So, again, to start thinking ahead on what our levy schedule looks like. With that, I'll bring it to the.
And the crowd, but.
No, it's warm, it's warm. Uh, also, I've got listed there, you know, a pretty good list of donations, um, you know, which, like I said, the, the help from all those folks, again, I think allow our students to have the nice things that they can have. Um, we got the five thousand from football from Temple, thousand to the Bath Boys students for football honors from Bob Silshock. Um, donations to John Dixon. We've got a thousand dollars from the, we got from wrestling camp, donations two fifty from the ministry cheer program, two fifty from Lyman First Church, uh, High School School Council. Uh, again, those are outstanding donations, which we greatly appreciate.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. For the second? Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. White. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Hersh?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Um, and then I guess looking, looking at forecasts again, as presented, um, we'll keep updating as, as we know more about, especially what's on the property tax front. Um, as soon as we get more current information on that, with changes like that, changes will be helping to be able to get that updated. Um, which I think the next one is in February, I think it's early.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
Somebody.
Do I have a second? Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. White. Any discussion?
Just a couple of comments if I can. So, we had a legislative meeting of the OSBA, and we understand one of our purposes is to extend our reach beyond the district. So, we try to work with folks, and I thank Mr. Esses, Mr. Parker for meeting with our local representatives as well as the state legislature, because those people control the money. Just so you know what's in play, so the legislature, the House was called back early. They only took up one item of the veto override, but they have the option to take up more. The Senate is now back in session. No action has been planned, but the interesting dynamic that's happening is the governor has appointed an advisory commission that includes no members of the legislature to discuss property tax reform, and by September thirtieth has to have definitive actions presented to the governor. The legislature's general feedback to that is, we told you how we wanted to do property tax reform, that's what we put in the state budget. So, there's potentially a battle early. So, something to watch.
Roll call.
Mrs. Hersh?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. White?
Yes.
Uh, can I hear kind of highlight of the reports, am I a book?
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
Some would.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. White? Mr. White?
Yes.
Yes. I have to move to Superintendent?
Yes, um, we have a substitute pay increase to keep this in mind of what's going on in County. Substitute pay for consecutive days, also trying to keep good subs here. Title one MOU with line of city schools, which I have resources, the SAVI MOU, pretty much all these MOUs are standard, we, we handle it. We have a job description for the outside custodian for the tax assessment, weight scale, improved weight scale of the tax assessment. We're moving from the tax discretion scale. Approve the MOU with the higher wage jobs and then purchase if you're a tractor, which will help us with, knowing, uh, chat around volunteers and speakers.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
Some would.
Do I have a second? Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. White. Any discussion?
Uh, Mark, you know, for that tractor, is there any other proof to approve?
Well, that's, that's through a state purchasing program, so really there's, um, you know, we got the best deal we could through that program properly.
I'm asking, is anybody ask CAT? Is anybody ask OCTED? OCTED has the same size tractor. And then CAT, they sell tractors similar to this, but they do sell equipment, and they have auto add, a lot of CATs, John's company. Also, I'll add, and they have a massive focus on the I'm not brand, a lot of, you know.
Right, no, I appreciate, no, I appreciate.
I do know that we get something from them, they're local, but in the district, Bob CAT is right across the street. Always wondered why, you know, Shawnee and Wal-Paw heads, Mercy Health and stuff like that, all over the fields. Um, we don't have anything. We're going to, in the light of the tractor dealer, get a tractor, not even asking, we love to, not to get anybody to sponsor anything like that. We need to build a relationship under, you know, businesses in the district. And it doesn't seem, it seems like we just go with whatever's there, nobody wants to go and ask anybody.
We can, uh, I can't give you answers. So we could postpone the vote. Maybe he's made the contacts, I, I remember that. So there's a motion table, it means you voted.
Do I have a motion to approve? Aye. Table and aye. Do I have a motion to approve to table aye? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. White. Any discussion? Roll call.
This, this, all of this press good for my.
Oh, it is, it's, that, well, the problem is, you go to, uh, changes models. So they're down, they're, of course, really low on this particular model. If we don't purchase this, probably next month, we'd be looking at next spring. But we'll get on this right. And that was Bob CAT, who was.
When they sell, OCTED, they sell tractors at the age, but they own the highlight. Highlight didn't make it up here, there's nobody buying from them, but the highlight is all over the state.
Roll call.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Searns?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Do I have a motion then to approve A through J, with the exception of I? Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. White? Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Searns?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, report from administrators, uh, transportation report and food service report, we're both, um, attached to our agendas, so. Carrying up the public items not on the agenda, have none. Items from individual board members, do they have anything? Okay. Executive session, we have no reason for executive, so. Next is adjournment. Our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, October twenty-first at seven PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. White. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Searns?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. White?
Shut the six. What? Shut the windows? Yeah. Oh, thank you.